Prepare call to the border of the Carter County Commission Monday, July 15th, 2019 at 6:00 p.m. I'd like for Director, Director, he's not here. Would you please come up and share with us the Agress?
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. On behalf of the Emergency Management Office, we welcome our guests tonight to the Commission Dinner. Just a few safety items, in case there is a fire drill tonight, everyone will exit out this door to the back of the parking lot. The fire department does not want anybody in the front of the courthouse, because that's where their trucks will be. They want everybody to respond down the steps and to the back of the parking lot. Also, if we do have a heart with cardiac emergency tonight, we do have an AED on the first floor beside the elevator, so that's where that is. And also, our bathrooms are at the end of this hall, for male and female, and they are handicap accessible.
Thank you, sir. It is really good to have the public attend to this meeting. It's always good, at least in my opinion, to look out and see such a number out here that's concerned about the County Commission, what we're doing for you all. So it's good to have you with us. Let the record reflect that all Commissioners are present. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Do I hear motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Commissioner Beal, second, Commissioner Grandstad. Discussion, Dr. Greco.
One item before we approve the agenda this evening. We have additional one item that's left, has not been resolved, and that remains to be seen how we are going to resolve that, that involves the planning department in terms of the bonus. And I want to know if we move through the agenda tonight, and ask the county attorney's opinion on this, once we go to the budget again, does that mean we have actually closed the 2018-19 budget and we cannot revisit that particular item?
My understanding is, as long as those funds haven't been reallocated into this budget in some fashion, that they're still available in the old budget before it's closed out, finally, and that can still be done, is my understanding. If those funds are not reallocated into each year's budget, that will be approved. That's the way I understand it.
Mr. Burke, would you comment on this, sir?
I understand it the same way. It'd have to be approved at the end of June, June 30, 2019. But the funds are there, and particularly on that item, it would take, as far as what's been requested, over 14,000 or something, had to come out of two lineups. And I've responded two or three times to submission of documentation that by statute, I'm required to have a detailed invoice to support any payments made, and to this day I have not received that.
In terms of bonus, it's strictly a bonus through the planning commission, it is the body, the director, the job well done. Does that require documentation?
It doesn't matter what way to answer.
Any funds, any...
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Well, I know that we had some bonuses given this year, is it required to sign documentation?
No, because I'm looking for extra work.
I think based on Commissioner Vice Chairman Johnson.
Chairman Lyons, is that the one thing you did? The way that the resolutions were lined up, you're establishing your tax levy before you go into your hearings by your budget for the other resolutions. If you pass that tax levy first, and you find an error, either you add to or you take away, you have to go back on the tax levy, get two-thirds of a vote to rescind that action before it's unnecessary. If you leave it at the last, make sure that you're approving all your other steps before you get to your levy.
Vice Chairman, I discussed that with Mr. Burke, Financial Director, because we talked about that on Saturday, I think, you brought that to my attention. I talked with Financial Director, we've also had discussion with, and set this budget with our attorney, and he needs to stay where he is.
So that means you pass your levy, and we run into a problem with the other two. You're going to do the procedure that had to be sent, is that correct, Mr. Burden?
Basically, once you set the tax rate, you set the tax rate.
Yeah, I know, but that means the other is just secondary, they have actually, everything has to match it. Why would you want to put a tax levy? And what it does is suspend the right of the Commissioner, regardless of what district, if they have something that enters to their district, they don't have a voice.
Well, they have a voice coming through Budget Committee, which has been about four times on the floor, four times. So they've been input into the budget process, the Budget Committee has, again, we'll give their report later, the Budget Committee has certainly taken input from every Commissioner including myself. So I don't want it to be, you know, we're starting off where it's going to be a point of, I don't want to use the word controversy, I won't start that. I'd like to entertain whatever's best in terms of this meeting. But as I said, I requested the Financial Director and our legal counsel, and their opinion is that I leave it where it is. Now, if there's some reason that we can, I mean, without getting out of bounds, if we want to move it to, to moving...
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I might, I would like to amend my motion to approve. I would like to move to approve the agenda, subsequent to moving item 12, letter A, to position of letter C. Back B and C up to A and B, and put A in as C.
Again, I'm going to go to our attorney and to our Financial Director to see if there's a problem with that.
There's no problem with what order you approve, I mean, that's...
I think we just got to get through it tonight.
That's what I'm trying to do. Try to get the agenda approved. That's what I'm trying to do. So, we have, we have, let me clarify the motion, Mr. Beal, excuse me. Your motion is to approve the agenda and move A down to C?
Correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
And then the rest follow behind that?
That's correct.
Is that correct? And are you willing, there's a second, Commissioner Grandstad? Okay. End of discussion on that. Does that help, Vice Chairman Johnson?
That's right, open them in.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Let the record reflect that Commissioner Blackto objects to that motion. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion before we set the agenda? Reveal the vote. Motion passed. Thank you very much, Vice Chairman. Please make that hesitation change on your agenda. Okay, at this time, I'll ask Brother Campbell, Commissioner Campbell, stand up and make us a prayer. Commissioner Lightwood, please.
Reddick, Lord God, we worship your throne of grace today, Lord, thank you for another day that you give us, Lord. God, we do pray today, Lord, for our country, Lord, we pray for each and every one, Lord, who takes part, God, in this meeting. For what we do, pray, Lord, for everything that you've done for us, Lord, prayers that you've made for us, Lord. Thank you for your love, mercy, and grace that you have upon each one of us, God. Lord, we know that there's a son in our commission that's still sick, Lord, and all the men. We just pray, Lord, you will know him, be with him, Lord, to be upon him. God, we do pray for each and every one that's sitting in the audience tonight, Lord, may I have problems, Lord, we just pray, God, that you intervene there. Lord, we do, Lord, thank you for your Son, Jesus Christ, to give his life, if we could have life, and have it more abundant. Lord, know that one day, that you said you went away and prepared a place for us, and on one day, Lord, when you pass it from this body, Lord, it would be in the presence of you. Lord, we ask these things of thy name, amen.
Attention, solid plate. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, if you have an agenda, number seven on the agenda is to recognize the elected and appointed officials and guests. So if you would stand at this time, please, we would like to recognize you and show you the... Thank you very much for your work. I hear motion to accept the minutes as presented, the June and July special call meetings. So move, Commissioner Hulman, to come to the office.
If you're with me, say.
We will do, on number eight, we have those together, locked together, we're going to do the minutes for June 1st, so have a motion for the June minutes. To approve for June minutes. Commissioner Jenkins, motion. Commissioner Jenkins, second. Any questions on the June minutes? Commissioner Buckland?
Page 7, 21. I believe it's that the notation about Green Ridge should be Green Bridge, or Green
Any other corrections? Commissioner Beal, Travis Beal.
Page 7, 10 at the bottom, Brandon Jenkins, we just go with two L's. And then on page 7, 16, voting for myself, I don't believe I'll break that further to me.
Any other corrections, relations? Commissioner Holman?
Page 7, 17. On the first vote, I voted for Cody McLean, but my name isn't listed anywhere at all on the votes for that round.
About that correction, please.
Thank you.
Any other corrections, relations or addition? Stand on. Reveal the vote. Passed, thank you very much. Now we will take out the special call meeting. You have the minutes in your package on the special call meeting. I hear motion to approve the minutes. Commissioner Frazier, motions, second. Commissioner Travis Beal, I'm sorry. End of discussion, special call meeting. Any corrections, relations? Please reveal the vote. Thank you very much. The next agenda, I'll do this approval of notaries and bonds. I should note those in your package, I hear motion to approve. Motion to approve, Commissioner James, second. Commissioner Jenkins, end of discussion on notaries and bonds. End of discussion. Go ahead and read those.
Tammy Raffair, Pinky Nugebar, Jennifer Howard, Tammy Gentry, Candace L. Gilbert, Carl Allen Robert Jr., Anita J. Alfred, Cindy L. Ginn, Lucinda Bomer, Olivia J. Lawson.
Okay, end of discussion on these items. Please reveal the vote. Motion passed, thank you. I was trying to find my place, and I think this is the place I want to change and just say. I think this is personal for me, and it's something I feel like I need to say, and I think this may be the proper time to do that for the proper thing. Thanks to Vice Chairman Johnson for filling in for me. Commissioner Johnson, that meant a lot to me. I've been in and out, as all of you know. Commissioner Garden has also stepped in, I think, from my understanding, a couple of times, to chair the Commission. I especially want to thank you for the prayers and the patience with me. I appreciate all the Commissioners. I know I've been kind of hit and miss. I didn't know that when I took the chair. So I do appreciate the prayers and the patience. I appreciate Attorney Harden working with me behind the scenes, trying to keep me up to date on what's going on, and I felt like that was really important for me. I especially want to thank Commissioner Aaron Frazier for substituting for me through the whole budget cycle. I know that was probably kind of dumped in your lap, Commissioner, but my understanding is you've done an exceptional job. So I really do appreciate what you do for me. Now, with that being said, all of you kind of know that I've been, some of you may not know, but I've been kind of waiting for a second surgery. My first surgery went real well, and I have been going through about fifteen, it seems like, fifteen different portals trying to get my back surgery scheduled. This past Friday, thank God, they finally called me and told me that they had a slot for me to do the surgery. I'll be having surgery, I was the first, that's with Dr. Scott Doolby, the neurosurgeon in Johnson City. I anticipated schedule with that would be, I hope, the surgery would be done, about two-hour process. Everything goes well with what I've been told, and I'll have a recovery period, I'll go back to see him in two weeks. I will not be able to do very much within 30 days, but I anticipate getting back in action as soon as I can. I hate that I'm hitting with it again, you can't do much about those health problems. So I thought I'd share that for tonight, and again, I would ask for your prayers and for the surgeon, particularly the surgeon, make sure he has a good night before he gets after me the next morning. And so, anyway, I felt like it was probably a good thing to share that tonight.
Is that the medical center on the B.A.?
It's at the medical center. I'm not sure what time they have it scheduled yet, but I mean, it's going to be on August 1st. They said they would notify me, I guess Dr. Icett made this, like the day before, whenever the chairman would shut up. I do know it's going to be pretty intensive, so let's pray everything as well. And I forgot to mention this, Mayor Barnett has been there for me, called me from time to time, telling me how much I missed, I think that's truth. No, I'm just kidding. I know that's the truth. So I left you out, I apologize for that. So with that being said, I'm going to go ahead and move on on the agenda, and we'll go ahead and Mayor Barnett has a proclamation I think he wants to present.
If I could, if I could have Mr. John Whitson and Mr. Arnold Blain to come up, please. And Commissioner Hart will be reading proclamation.
This is a mayor proclamation to commend John Whitson to Whitson Barbershop. Whereas Whitson Barbershop, located at 782 West Elk Avenue in Elizabethan, has been in continuous operation by the Whitson family for over 50 years, since it was originally opened in May of 1970 by Gary Whitson. Whereas Whitson Barbershop moved to its current location in 1974, has always been a family-friendly place to get a haircut, have a healthy discussion about sports, politics, or any other topic of interest while you're there. Whereas John Whitson is a native of Carter County, who graduated from Happy Valley High School, where he was all-conference athlete in basketball, baseball, and football, and he began working for his uncle Gary at the shop in 1997. Whereas John Whitson has been proprietor and master barber of the shop since the year 2000. Whereas in addition to cutting hair and carrying on good conversations over the years, John Whitson has been the epitome of a good neighbor, as on August 17, 2017, when a pastor by ran into Mr. Whitson's barbershop to notify him that the house next door to the shop was on fire, Mr. Whitson and his brother-in-law, Arnold Blain, ran next door, entered the home to find the seven-year-old homeowner and removed him from the burning home to the safety of his shop by the fire department's fault to get the fire under control. Whereas Mr. Whitson serves as a great example of the type of people who live and work among us daily and make Carter County a great place to call home. Now therefore, I, Mayor Russell Barnett, by virtue of authority vested in me by the laws of the great state of Tennessee, hereby proclaim that we honor and commend John Whitson for his continued willingness to provide a needed service for the citizens of Carter County at Whitson's Barbershop, and for demonstrating the type of character and heroism our county can be proud of.
Make a motion to accept.
Give a second.
Say it.
I don't think it needs a motion.
Mr. Beal, will you come on?
I just want to say a couple of things about these guys. These are some great individuals. They can cut my little boy's hair for almost 10 years, they gave him his first haircut, and let me tell you, if you do want some healthy conversation, I'd be the only female in that barbershop before, and it is some great conversation, and it's worth to go. I want to thank you both for talking about our county.
I know these gentlemen are very dear friends of mine, and I got chicks from Lawfield with John Whitson, a whole bunch through high school, a few years ahead of me, and Arnold, I would have the luxury, and I'm sure it would have been great, of some hard experiences in my life to share with you. And I appreciate your family, everything you do in this county, and what really stuck out to me in this, the one part of this proclamation, it is a great example of the type of people who live and work among us daily and make Carter County a great place to call home. We appreciate you guys, you save a man's life, that could be the greatest accomplishment maybe in anyone's life. We're so thankful for that, but we're so thankful for everybody in this county, there's so many people that are willing to do that, and we're so lucky. I got a friend in law at a Bible school this week, it's fantastic, I mean, to see this and to get to recognize you guys for what you've done, and what you mean in our community, and the barbershop, the area, he probably gave me my first pair of ashes. So it's a special meeting, and I'm proud of you guys, and thankfully we part of this and aren't you last for this mission.
Anyone else want to comment? Any other comments?
I'd like to comment on that, that mother and granddaughter, Liz Wright, she sang at a funeral, what's that? And Liz is the wife of Gary, the former owner of the barbershop. Gary called at home one day, and he's to my house, and he said, "Your dad is here." I said, "No, he's had, he just had his fourth stroke." They said, "Your dad is here. Your dad is here." He walked two and a half miles to the barbershop, and they gave him a haircut, but he had $2. And I said, "Why am I worried he gets the $2?" She said, "They don't know us," and they gave him $4 to put in the glister plate. He evidently saved that too.
Thank you, thank you all very much, thank you, Mayor. Okay, if you look at your agenda, it's now time for public comments. I will remind the public that we have five-minute period on public comments and so. Madam Clerk will hold me to that five minutes as we proceed. If you have a public comment, serve a moment, and to us. Please let me have your name and your address.
So, my name is John Blain. Not today, are we? Last time I was here, it didn't seem like it was a month ago, but I was singing praises of Mr. Schubler and what he has managed to do with the animal shelter. He has accomplished more in the three or four months when he took over that operation up there to get things done than we have been able to accomplish through the previous administration with the advisory board, with the board of directors, with the friends committee since the door opened. He had that, he got those things done in four months' time. So with seeing that, it brings me no pleasure to be here today, because I was hoping that would be my last trip to the County Commission. I've had enough county government to last me two lifetimes, so I thought, drop the microphone, I'm out of here, fade into the sunset, get the horses going, let's get out of here. And then last week, my phone just started going crazy, lighting up text messages and emails and things like that, going, "You don't believe what's going on, you don't believe what's going on, and it's okay." So what happened? And they said, "Well, the Budget Committee is making a recommendation now to take Chris Schubler off of all the operations, all development, and all the rest of stuff, and get rid of that altogether, and to bring in somebody else at a $70,000, $75,000 a year, rather than pay him the $16,000 or $17,000." And he was a wonderful world, would you do something like that? We've got a very qualified person who's done a great job, why would you want to do that? And they said, and this is documented, because this sounds so silly, that there are people on the Budget Committee that are also county employees, and if we give Chris that money, well then, he'll be making more money than them. He may be working more hours, he may get more things accomplished, but those things don't play to play, he might be making more money than somebody else that's in that Budget Committee. I said, "You have got to be kidding." I have went to a lot of Commissioners, and I thought that this Commission right here is without a doubt the best Commission that we have ever had since I've lived in Carter County. I mean, best hands down. And to make that kind of recommendation because of penny jealousy of, "Well, he might be making more money than me," I thought, "Well, that's just, that's just crazy." And the other, and the other alternative to that would be to take that position and dump it on the mayor, who does one, and let him dump it on his administrative assistant, who does one. And I remind you that we did that once before, that we did that with the previous administration, and we put that role on Miss Susan. And Susan, I remind you, had a degree in interior design, very proud of that, interior design. Now, I want real estate, not... Now, I own a real estate company. What we do with people with an interior design is when somebody wants to sell their house and the carpet doesn't match the blinds and they've got blind stuff in the house that looks horrible, rather than the realtor saying, "Your house really looks, looks bad," we have somebody with interior design that does it. That way we can put it off on them and they tell them how to match up the property. Certainly not qualified to be a economic development or anything like that. So when we dumped it on Susan and paid her forty-eight thousand dollars to do that, plus overtime, when she lost that job and we dumped her into the animal shelter and we lost about three years of progress on that and it's going to take us about another year to get back to where we were on that. So that brings us back to Mr. Schubler and having what he has done so far for this county. Beyond the HDA system that I was getting bids on when I did this last bout with cancer, we were at past thirty thousand dollars on getting that fixed, which was going to come down to the county for, for funding.
Excuse me, Mr. Blain, that's five minutes, sir. Five minutes.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, I timed this out at home and it was a lot like that. Okay, well, I'll wrap it up then. Between, between the act-
Five minutes.
Huh?
Five minutes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comments?
Yes, sir.
Come on in. I have Madam clerk holding the timer for me. Go ahead with your name, sir.
Chris Little, one-six-five, playing Little Run Valley Forge. Just, no dog in this race, but I do want to thank Chris and his department. Kelly was up there and continued what Green Bridge Landing looked like when we started up there. It was a forest. And seriously, about eighty to ninety percent of the work at Green Bridge, Chris showed it. He brought his own equipment up there and he leveled it and removed all his stuff. So I do give him a shout out for that, but no dog in this race. I'm with GoBetsy. We're having Meet Carter County Festival, August the twenty-fourth. It's moved this year downtown to the Cover Bridge Park. We would like to invite all of you to come. We are part of Meet the Mountains. We are the Meet Carter County part of it. We've got Cabela's bringing in their archery tent. We've got TWRA bringing in their airsoft trailer. I've been working with Commissioners Jenkins and Hill. We're about to secure trout fishing up at the Roan Mountain Community Park, not State Park, but the community park, and this will help promote the new over-the-mountain trout trail that they have in Roan Mountain. So we have a lot of stuff going on. This is a way to show Carter County. If you are a department head and you would like to have a booth to show what your department does in Carter County, you can go to gobetsy.com, click on our links there, you can get a form and fill it out. It's free. If you're with a nonprofit organization, your booth is free. We want to promote what we have here. If any of you all are not busy that morning and you want to help for a couple hours, I'd be more than glad to accept that. But this, this is a way to promote what we have here and we would like to invite you all to be part of it. If you've got any questions, please ask me, Commissioner Hill, Danny Ward. But, you know, we'd like to have the sheriff department next year if you can to set up, you know, anything that you want to do, drug prevention, the gun locks, anything like that. We'd like to have Sheriff Department there, Benny, Chris, Shannon, any of y'all that want to set up a booth and promote what Carter County has, but that's August the twenty-fourth on a Saturday.
Thank you, sir. It's going to be from ten in the morning. Liz Metz was putting on a movie that night, Parking Rats doing a movie. And if I was you, I'd spend the money and put my surgeon up at a Holiday Inn Express. Can you make my reservations for me? Any other public, come on up, sir. Yes, sir. Please state your name and your address. That would be your shirt, sir, for the record.
Name's William Grant, thirteen sixty-four, Charity Hill Road. Don Grant's Construction, Carter County. And I want to give back to these guys about Chris Schubler. He's a man's man. He's a good dude. I keep saying it about Benny. Can't say that about Benny in the dump. I have spent a fortune in tires. Got a truck out there right now. It's got nails and screws and three of the tires. It's two hundred dollars a piece for them tires. This thing's kind of got a little bit out of hand. I've done a little Facebook post, Grant's Construction page, about the nails, stuff like that apart the dump. This dump is a huge mess. Now, I've heard that Benny's been working a little bit since I was a start, but I might be spreading a little rabbit. Might be up there. I've got a bathroom remodel job going on right now, so I guess I'll get to go up there and inspect it tomorrow. But we're going to have to try to figure out a way in the village to, I guess, a little concrete pad up there for people so they can pull in there and then big old machines can take, push it anywhere. Is the city going to start dumping that to the chem-
No.
They're not going to do it? Well, that's probably good for them because nobody, you know, it's just, it's ridiculous. Got another man right here.
Go ahead, sir. Go ahead and make your comments.
Can I, can we get some money to make a good place up there to dump? Because I pay a lot of money, know a lot of people who pays a lot of money, a lot of businesses who pays a lot of money to dump up there, that owns businesses. Can we get something up there where people can pull in, have a clean spot to turn around and not have to sit and worry about nails every time, every time you come out there? Can we get somebody to do something?
I think in terms of your question, I would refer you back to the landfill committee. Ms. Culler, would you like to say something, please?
Yes, I would. I think you should discuss about demolition sites, is that correct, Chris?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
The city will not be dumping at the demolition site. Also, the demolition site is constantly moving because we're moving the trash, so there's no way you could put a concrete pad. It doesn't stay in the same-
Can I, can I put in on?
You may.
I've been dumping in that same spot for a long time where it's at.
I believe you're dumping on top of the hill.
Yeah. Or there's a pile of drivers in the city.
And also, if there's a problem with the landfill, that is not personal. Have to hold the line. I appreciate if you wouldn't do a worship back on Mr. Lyons just on the land.
No, Mr. Lyons, threaten, threaten-
Excuse me. We will have, we will have respect and we will have order, sir.
That's what I'm trying, I'm trying to do, that. But you, you didn't get threatened like I did by Benny and some other guy named Key and Arnie.
Excuse me. Please stick with your comments and then we will have Mr. Lyons, no relation to this Lyons, let me make that clear. We will have him to address your concerns.
Can I have your address? And cannot.
No, you can finish your comments, please.
Then let's let Benny have the floor then.
Excuse me. Sir, let me tell you.
What's the law? Back and forth.
We're not-
I'm just trying to say that, I'm going to get-
Sir, listen to me. You need to listen to me, not those guys. Listen to me. We are not going to have back and forth with Mr. Lyons or Ms. Culler or any other commissioner out here. I gave you the opportunity to speak for five minutes, just like I did Mr. Blain.
Yeah.
And you, you, you spoke it. Now, I thought this five minutes is probably up, I'm sure. One more minute.
One more minute.
I don't want to cut you short.
I ain't trying to start on here.
No, listen.
It doesn't got to start on here. I got one minute for it.
You, listen to me. Let me tell you something. I'm going to tell you again. You listen to me. There is going to be respect on this floor. So let's stop at this chair.
I have respect for people, but I don't have respect for people who call me and threatens me and threatens me with a pistol and stuff like that.
That, sir, can be held with if the sheriff's department, if you want to go there and file something. That is not going to happen on this floor. I'll tell you. Please.
Wait. Is there any money? Is there any money? Can we come up with any money to try and get something out of there?
Blain, you haven't got time. Let me, let me tell you where to go. This may help you. Go to the next landfill committee meeting and or the next budget committee meeting.
And the August fifth, right?
Pardon?
August the fifth, is that one?
And then ask your questions, sir. Get on the agenda and ask your questions that you have coming, coming forward now. Now, your five minutes, but I am, it seems like it's been a pretty direct attack or whatever on Mr. Lyons. So I'm going to give him a brief minute because he's the director of the landfill and Ms. Culler is the chairman, chairwoman, excuse me, of the landfill committee. I'm going to give him, you may not get together up here. You go ahead.
No.
No, what I want you to do, is it Mr. Grant? Did I get that right?
Yes, yes.
Please, please maintain a-
I'm telling this kid, come.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lyons, will you, will you go ahead and try to address him?
Yes, sir. Let's see what he has to add.
Okay. It's going to be brief, very brief and in order.
First of all, guys, in June, I'm probably in over a hundred and a half left in it. A pile, he says, since seven hundred percent for a year, they was moved in there June eighteenth. I have receipts right here to prove that. Also, if I threaten you, bring your phone up here and play it for these people. Go ahead and bring it up here.
Mr. Lyons, Mr. Lyons.
You got it on the phone. I'm good.
Benny, I'm going to stick to the same rule with you. I'm sorry, but I stick with everyone else.
Yes, sir.
Please respect that.
If he's going to ruin my name saying I threaten him, I won't even play it.
Okay, that's, that's an issue that needs to be dealt with outside public comments.
Not only does these people come up here and test me, they test my employees.
Benny, excuse me. What you need to do is listen to me. I can, I know that this is he, I can see it. It's my job to try to maintain this. What I would suggest you do is to, both of you have the opportunity to go file whatever you need to file to stop this process back and forth. But it's not going to be settled and disrupt the whole commission meeting tonight.
I agree, sir.
And I know you respect that. You're, please respect that.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. I just don't think that we're going to resolve anything with this back and forth. Okay. Other public comments? Yes, sir. Come on up and state your name and address, please.
My name is Michael Ward. I live at one-six-three Frank's, in Elizabethan. I came down here tonight with no intention of getting up to say anything. I knew that Bill Grant would be here, for his sake, and I also knew that Benny Lyons would be here for his sake. I have many of the same concerns and problems that Mr. Grant has at the landfill with our own business. I spend hundreds and hundreds of dollars repairing and replacing tires. And I have been attacked personally by Mr. Lyons and other people that have worked at there previously. I have had to be in arguments with different people at the landfill on multiple occasions. And I will be at the landfill committee commission on the fifth to address those concerns. I don't understand what's going on up there and why something can't be fixed. That's ridiculous. I do have pictures of several trips to the landfill approved and I also have three other business owners that are willing to come to the meeting and see if we can get something resolved with the landfill then. That's all I'd say.
Thank you, sir. And I appreciate you saying the correct venue is going back to the landfill committee, Chairwoman Culler.
I just want to come down here and, you know, say there is a problem and it's to be fixed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Landfill meeting is in six o'clock, almost at six.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Would you come up and state your name and address?
My name is Wyatt Lyons. I'm living on forty-three, Los Tons of Crows. My dad's Benny Lyons. I am a member of the, we'll talk about Apes, this is the landfill. And I drive a forty thousand dollar Jeep and I go up there lots a week maybe to flop my airplanes. You get nails on your tires. I get nails on my tires in Johnson City. It's a fact of life. I mean, you can redraw it down the middle of the highway, get nail on your tire. There's shingles and stuff going on in the landfill all the time. I've seen my dad's operations. I've been to other landfills. I think the Carter County landfill is one of the best run landfills around the area. And that's just not because he's my dad, that is the truth. I've seen three different landfills and it is one of the cleanest landfills since he took over. Now, I've been flying my airplanes up there for a very long time and I don't know the previous director of the landfill, but whenever my dad took over, it was a complete dump. It's a dump anyways, but it was a lot worse than what it was. He's cleaned it up very nicely, I believe. It's all in our bush hall. Keeps it very nice. The road's actually very good. I know he runs a vacuum over it. But getting nails on your tires is a fact of life. It's getting worse.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Anyone else have a comment? Come on up, sir. Please, the name and address. Sorry, I just meant to speak.
Uh, Cleveland, you're very good to look at the county comparison. We've got the right to get and to be put on the ball out gate to get a time to turn the paper and speak.
Who's speaking? Mr. Livingston? Commissioner Culler.
Oh, Mr. Blavens, we can speak to the microphone instead of leaning back. We can't hear you back here.
Mr. Blavens has objected to Mr. Livingston speaking, so therefore it has to go to vote and see if the commission wants to allow that. My intent is to allow anyone in public access to speak. If you want to, like, attorney just told me, if you want to overrule my decision, we'll go to the board and you can overrule my decision. Two thirty-one.
With all due respect, he's an American speaker and I say let him speak.
I second that.
Point board, Mr. Chair. So it's a yes vote to allow Mr. Livingston to speak. It's a no vote to disqualify him from speaking. Thank you. Mr. President.
I'd like to take my vote and power and make some good directions on it. We're going to start up along-
Let's go to the board. Madam clerk, call the robe. Yes?
The motion was not clearly stated. Certainly, I think we probably need a, a bill of-
Commissioner James.
We're going to let five minutes sit here going round and round.
Yeah, it's my job to try to get it back on track, right? It's off the track. So we have a motion. Would you restate your motion? Who made the last motion? First motion?
We need to cancel this vote.
Okay.
You would just, a yes would be to let Mr. Livingston speak while a no would be not let Mr. Livingston speak.
I understand. The city already would take care of that, right?
Yes, sir.
Let's go to the robe. We got a few other questions.
Did we have someone challenge the chair?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear that.
Yes. Mr. Blavens.
No, I mean, I heard you say you objected, but did you not make a decision as to-
Yes, I made a decision to let him speak and he wants to challenge the chair.
Oh, okay. I didn't hear that.
Absolutely. That's why I'm going to-
That's why I wanted him to-
That's why we're going to the floor for a vote. Call the robe. Yes, let him speak, no, and you're overruling the chair when you're doing this.
No. That's okay.
Please reveal the vote. Twenty-two, yes. Mr. Livingston, go ahead and state your name and your address.
Blackwood. Please, them, him. Please, them, him. I'd like to address a couple things if I could. After the last meeting here, I gave a handout to all the commissioners, the big bold letters of the duties of the mayor. I wanted all of them to know exactly what his duty was, which would be no conflict in it, the big bold letters, were they clear? Were they to refer back to at any time if they had any thoughts about what the mayor's duties was? But anyway, prior, or after the meeting there, the next meeting we had was a committee meeting. Mr. Johnson back here, in front of me back here, and said that there would be one more political handouts in here. He said, "We ain't gonna have this." And he kinda put me with the prior mayor, the prior mayor, come in and sit down in front of me. He had absolutely nothing to do with this, this was my dues upon me. And you can show me where there's anything, any rules or regulations that says you can't go handout like this to try to help benefit the commissioners and their education of what's going on. That, that's what I counted. But if there's any rules or anything says that I can't speak or do a handout as long as it's educational and not anything against the commission or whatever, to show me, I'll back off. But anyway, this deal on Mr. Schuber, paying him and stuff, and I'd like to ask the chair, ask the attorney to explain to us what the deal is. He's, he's on salary, and what it looks like here, anytime that you interact with another entity in this building, that you get paid for it if you're another, you know, like the planning commission, to the trustees office, or anywhere. If you go do something in that office the way it appears to be set up, you're gonna get paid for it. If you're already getting paid in the office that you're in, and if every time you went and interacted with another office, and you got paid, I don't know how this works, but maybe the attorney to explain to us if it's possible. Can you draw them two different entities at the same time?
I would have to ask the chair, sir, this is a question and answer, it's public talk.
Okay.
If I was the chair, I'd say make comments and say that.
All right, the chair, the chair, you're explaining to everybody, everybody makes a note.
I'm going to tell you, Mr. Livingston, like I talk with gentlemen, Mr. Grant, that the back and forth question, take your comments, and we'll take those comments and pass those on to the appropriate committee.
Who?
The appropriate committee.
Who is the appropriate committee?
Well, you have the financial management committee, you have the budget committee involved, that ultimately comes to the, to the floor.
That's fair enough.
Is that fair enough?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. See you at the time. Appreciate your time. Thank you. Mr. Chair. Yes, ma'am, would you come up and state your name and address, please?
My name is Melissa Crapman, and my address is three ninety-three Old Tallah Road, Old Toga, Tennessee, Turkey Town. I'm an employee at the Landfills. And Mr. Lyons is my direct supervisor, work the scales, and we do the books, secretarial work. And lately, it's become a cuss session when Mr. Grant has had people with a personal vendetta come and attack us. There was no cursing or threats upon, that came from Mr. Lyons, it all came the other, the other way around. And his face, if you go to Grant's Construction, I hate that they left because I'm not talking behind his back because this is being taped. And I feel that his vendetta against us, he, he goes from one vendetta to another, whether it's a church or with a company. I notice now it's, it's the police department, but now, you know, he's, it's like several times a day through Grant's Construction, he's attacking the landfill. You know, there's no way possible that you can constantly be pushing back that branch, there's no way. You know, we come in to work and there's a chance that we're gonna run over a nail because these guys are coming in with the roofing materials which has nails in it. That's what happens at a dump. You know, if you went to a nursery, you're gonna step in a, in a diaper full of food. It's just, this is what's gonna happen, you know, it depends on where you are as to what, you know, what the, what the, and what's gonna happen. But I can tell you this, I didn't realize when I started working there, the kind of job that these men do. Mr. Lyons works practically twenty-four seven. I know that when he was on vacation, he was called multiple times a day. He answered it multiple times a day when we had to call him on his vacation. Mr. Grant didn't wait and try to address this with Mr. Lyons, he went straight and attacked him on Facebook. And it's been that way constantly since this happened the other day. But like I said, myself and Bonnie Ford was there, we heard both half of the conversation. And there have been threats, not just to Mr. Lyons, but to some of the commissioners, he wants to do a cage match and, and, you know, try to take on some of you guys. And, you know, I just wanted to let you all know that, you know, these guys work hard.
Cage match is not gonna happen in here. That was my point. The point is, I think, I think Commissioner Chairwoman, Ms. Culler's heard all this back and forth, I think it gives you something to, to work with, Ms. Culler, and I would like to refer that whole problem back to you, if that's okay, ma'am.
Just to let you know, I've heard you before, no.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner James?
You know, I've been over rules and laws for, I don't know, four or five years now. We've talked about public comments. It's our God-given right as Americans, and people fight for it every day to come down here and speak. And I would be damned if I would let anybody not speak.
I'm not sure if that was directed to the chair or not, but I can tell you, Mr. James, I've been on that committee with you, and I hope I haven't stopped anyone from coming to the podium, but I hope you can see that I was trying to keep order in the house. Any other, any other public comments? I'll be glad to entertain those, especially with Chairman Jenkins, who I have tremendous respect for, making sure everyone has the right to speak. Any other public comments? I think it would be appropriate to take about a ten-minute recess. I throw it out in the hallway, but this next half will go better than the first half. Okay, grassman, drop it.
Okay.
Dane, round two.
Okay, if you remember, we're on resolutions now number twelve, and as I recall, we moved making appropriations up to A, and then fixing the levy rate, tax levy rate will go down to be C. I think I have that right, is that right by Chairman? Okay, so what we're gonna do is go into the resolution A, which would be making appropriations for the various funds, departments, institutions, offices, and agencies of Carter County. That's what we're starting with, A, that is now A. Everyone on the stage, A with me, I hope. You guys, you guys on the board? Just making sure, we're on the second. Okay, we'll go ahead and start with that resolution. Do I hear a motion to approve that resolution? Do I hear a motion, Commissioner Frasier, second by Travis, Commissioner Travis Hill?
Which resolution?
A.
A, okay.
We got it.
This is the motion to the resolution that we moved.
Yes.
Not detection.
Okay.
We're just...
Am, am I understanding if there was a system change? You all have to change, there was one number that had to change, which changed the part line number. I think that misses due to that, right?
So we have a motion, second to approve this resolution. Any discussion on the resolution? Any discussion on the resolution?
Are we gonna take this in a one vote?
One vote?
Yeah, absolutely, we can, yes, sir. Does that, does that suffice for everyone? Take it all in a lump sum? Motion?
Second.
Second. We already have a second. Okay, I'm moving, Patsy, I see your hand over there, keep me going, you're a good lady. Mary Good, strange you will. Any discussion?
Uh, Dr. E. Cuff. Just, let's clarify that we're all in some place, so this is making appropriations for various funds and departments, et cetera, or is it making appropriations to certain nonprofit charitable?
It is, it is making, let me read it again. A, we switched this out, remember? We're on A. Making appropriations for the various funds, departments, institutions, thank you, Dr. E. Cuff, for your help with that. Everyone understand that? Okay, let's go to the color room. Please reveal the vote, Madam Clerk. Please reveal the vote. Motion passed. The resolution passed. Okay, now the next resolution that we go to because of a change up is B, okay? On B, which is the second resolution, and this is the resolution to make appropriations to certain nonprofit charitable and civic organizations. Commissioner Fager?
Would you accept?
Second by Commissioner Grandstaff. Discussion, Commissioner Harrow.
Yes, sir, I would like to point out that at this time I will be abstaining for cause because I'm a current seated member of the Board of the Shepherd's Inn. But I would hardly, hardly would vote for this and be affirmative if I did not have that confirmation.
Thank you for that, ma'am. Mr. Chairman, I will do the same thing because I'm the board for Boise Rose Court. Thank you, thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Please reveal the vote. Motion passed. Resolution approved. Now, let's go back up and get C, which is your first one. Fixing the tax levy in Carter County to the city for the fiscal year, we get July one, two thousand nineteen, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. Do I hear a motion to approve? Motion made by Chairman Gar. Second by Commissioner Mike Hill. Discussion on the floor. Any discussion? No discussion, stand, no discussion, please call the robe. Please reveal the vote. Motion passed, resolution passed. Okay, remaining resolution, excuse me, is D, provide financial assistance to be paid for Carter County tax revenues, low income, elderly, taxpayers, elderly and permanently disabled homeowners, disabled veterans, in addition to the tax relief already provided by State of Tennessee, as provided in Tennessee Code as it paid and...
Make a motion.
Do I hear a motion, Secretary Jenkins, second by Commissioner Trivert. Do I hear a discussion, any discussion on the motion, on the resolution? All the motion, any discussion? Stand now, please call the robe, Madam Clerk. Please reveal the vote. Motion passed, resolution passed. Okay, thank you for that. Number thirteen, consideration of Second Amendment contract for the EcoSafe Systems LLC for solid waste transportation disposal. We have several down through here that repains two solid waste, protect those individually, I guess, from, chair says yes, so. Thirteen, do I have a motion to consider? Motion to approve by Commissioner Culler, second by Commissioner Blevins. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion? No discussion, please call the robe. Please reveal the vote. Motion passed, thank you. On our agenda, we're down to number fourteen, consideration of solid waste disposal agreement with the State of Elizabethan.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Commissioner Travis Hill, second by Commissioner Grandstaff. Any discussion on this proposal? Commissioner Gar?
Just a comment, I'd like to thank everybody that was in on this, Ms. Culler, being, she committed to the county attorney to write this contract up and all that, it's gonna be, it's gonna take some work to, to make it work, but I think it's gonna be a good thing, talking about a hundred fifty thousand plus revenue for our family, it's a really good deal, just glad it's got more partners on that for us.
Take account on that. Commissioner Culler?
Uh, yes, just to make clear, this commission, this contract is for the transfer station off of Denver, it's off.
Any other comments on the motion?
I'd like to say, I think it's, I think it's really nice that we're working with the city board in a positive way.
Absolutely, this is, this is a great step forward. Thank you, Commissioner Culler. Commissioner Mike Hill?
Well, not only that, the, the solid waste game is, is a numbers game, and, and we will experience a discount based on the extra tonnage, and so I'd like to give props to many on that.
Any other discussion comments? I'll slide my comments. Madam Clerk, call the robe. Please reveal the vote. Motion passed.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. And I will say, Commissioner Lyons, Benny Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Culler? Your committee has done an outstanding job with this project, for whatever that means. Excellent work. Please, number sixteen, consideration of the Health Department cleaning services contract. That's in your package?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. Fifty considerations of contract for uniform services at the Highway Department.
I so move.
So move, who was that? Commissioner Trivert, second, Commissioner Frasier. Discussion on the motion. Discussion on the motion, stand now, please call the robe. Please reveal the vote. Motion passed. Okay, now number sixteen, consideration of the Health Department cleaning services contract, we all have that in, do I hear a motion on that?
So move.
So move, Commissioner Trivert, second by Commissioner Grandstaff. So moved, Commissioner Trivert, second by Commissioner Grandstaff. Any discussion on the motion? Discussion, discussion. It's slowing me down over here, I guess. I'm not on speed, I promise you, Sheriff, for the rest of me. This is the Health Department. Commissioner Trivert made the motion, it's second by Commissioner Grandstaff. Did you go? That's in the grid. You sure you got it? Reveal the vote. At this time, we call the Honorable Mayor Barnett.
All right.
I was gonna, just go on by 17 again, see there. Consideration of county participation. Oh, this is very, 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 not to the rest of the county, for this man here. Consideration of county participation in the State of Tennessee 457 Compensation Plan.
That's the 401K.
Oh, it is? Good, that's not mistaken. Okay. All right. The floor is open to consider county participation, State of Tennessee 457 Plan. Do I hear a motion? We're taking these separate. Motion made by Commissioner Mike Hill, second by Commissioner Haller. Any discussion on the 457 Plan? Any discussion? You have a question?
I would, I would just like to say that this is a good bit of, uh, that Tom David Litter, as I said a long time, he is the man that's mentioned in here where it says chair, the chair, the chair, the chair. That's David Litter. And, uh, he's got a great track record, his office has a great track record of providing, uh, some very, very well called out, uh, items that where they can make, make money. And it's solid, they don't take any chances. It's a good, good system.
Thank you.
I've been in it for years, several years, and it's a good system.
Any other comments on?
I could say something. The only difference between what you all have and the actual newest version is that the new version's gonna be effective October 1st. I think the version you all have says June 1st, that's the old, of course, that's the only change.
Do you wish to request?
Uh, just wanna ask and make sure that a lot of the issues that folks have had with this with regarding penalties and fees and rollovers and stuff like that, have those all been addressed in the meetings?
Yes. Any other questions? Uh, we have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
What about ones that are nationwide, if your money's been fixed and retirement's just a year away, what's gonna happen with us?
Okay, of course nationwide will be frozen to new participants and new contributions, uh, in either participating in the State of Tennessee plan or a different plan of achieving. And from what I understand, once you retire, you're free to do with those funds what you, what you wish. That's your question.
But that brings up, uh, does that mean that they can't contribute the next year or two to their retirement?
They can't contribute nationwide.
But they can do some of the rest.
Right. With state or with another bank or way.
Any other discussion on the motion? Say no, please call the roll. Please reveal the vote. That passed. Now, the second motion is in Part Two of this. It's consideration of county participation in the 401, the 4.
401K.
401K.
Yes.
Compensation Plan. Do I hear a motion? Here's the privacy, we're motion made, motion, you're second. Commissioner Coller, the second of the motion. Any discussion? Any discussion? Please reveal the vote. Motion passed. Can I, Mayor, now, I'll start what we have here before.
That's second one, a little introduction, that first one, you know, I was getting excited then. Uh, those, uh, going through my mayoral responsibility, uh, kind of a cheap shit here, but, uh, I do, I do my job, that's that. Uh, anyway, we get off of that, but, uh, first of all, I want to thank, I want to thank everyone, Brad, Mike, their staff and, and each office holder, you guys, I mean, employees, get this budget worked out, and we get this budget worked out and, uh, bounced out, I think it's a good thing. I mean, you know, it's, uh, makes me feel good the first year, you know, having to go back, you know, feeling myself already, but it comes sooner or later. Anyway, I want to thank everybody, I don't want to leave anybody out, but, uh, and, uh, Miss Abby, I can't leave Miss Abby out, but she does tons of paperwork and, uh, uh, I want to touch and lighten this with, we got three units that's bad over to jail, which is complex out there, just somebody might hear that, but one on emergency. We got ten in tomorrow, one of them's, and then we got two more putting out for bids, so we have three on that. Two of us twenty-seven years old, one of us thirty years old, so I think the Band-Aids are, that's, we're done, you know, no more Band-Aids, so, uh, just thought I'd throw that at you. Just want to throw out, our Carter County John Eaton on board met today and, uh, our interregal grievance was good except for the City of Elizabethan, they're, they have one question on the budget part of it, so they're gonna take it back before them, their people next month, and they should be, the city attorney thinks everything should work out, but everybody on board, you know, they've had that one thing with the budget, which is very worked out next, uh...
Mayor, what, what was the question that they asked on that?
They're, they're wanting to know about funding. It's been self-funding, you know, it's self-funding right now. And if it ever has to come down to a budget, the four mayors will sell a budget and it's based on, uh, population, you know, which, uh, City John City's had six hundred people, we'll talk to some of them, City, you know, if we ever had to come to a budget where it couldn't fund itself, uh, right now it's been self-funding, you know, they're, they're making it, but, you know, they're already making it, but, uh, that was their question, but, uh, uh, Mr. Bayes, he didn't see no problem, you know, taking it back before him and, uh, and get this worked out, you know, dissolve the CT, uh, CCT. Just want to bring up, I've got, I've been working with this fishing, that's this fishing term, you fishermen know about it, uh, um, good Harold, uh, has been, we've been talking with people watching Marina, we've got this fishing league world, let's see, it's, uh, fishing league worldwide, some kind of program, we want to come to a talk at Lake. And we got, uh, got a agreement, kind of a verbal agreement today to pay for their fee to come here, bring probably a hundred twenty bucks, anywhere from a hundred twenty to two hundred bucks, they say, you know, it's, uh, four days, next May, uh, it's gonna be great for econo, uh, economy, uh, bring in a hundred twenty bucks, that's the minimum, if I bring more, three days of practice fishing, I didn't know you had to practice fish, but I guess you, you practice fishing for three and then the fourth day on Saturday they have the big tournament. And, uh, you know, they're, they're pros, they'll bring a lot of people, there'll be a lot of promotions going on, so, uh, GWRA wants a fee out of it, so we're trying to get some help with the fee on that, to bring that in, because it'd be good for the economy. Got notice every word, let's see. Okay, we've been talking about, um, what to do with economic development, I mean, that's like I say, that's in your guys', your hands. I've been reaching out, uh, with some help. We're gonna have a strategy plan, you know, when we, uh, when we, when we do decide to hire somebody, uh, create jobs on this plan, uh, been talking to C-Tech, C-Tech is really good, a couple other people that we had named, so we've been reaching out, they're sending us, uh, qualifications and guidelines and stuff, so we'll be bringing that forward to communities, if, you know, at appropriate time to bring it through the communities, uh, you know, we post notices in the paper and all that, internet, you know, get, you know, which is cool what you guys want. And, uh, like I said, we've been reaching out to C-Tech, we've been going very hard, so, let me see if I missed anything, oh, in your, I always try to touch on this, autopsy is a day on this, this month, so, uh, we're down to two this month, for the year's twenty-nine, so we're about on, we're about, I think, we're about on target on it, but, uh, but, we're getting reports in, like we asked, you know, bad ask for it, we're getting reports. See if you missed anything, if that's, um, pretty much anybody got any questions for me? Snap-on deal is right at the final line, except for, uh, the title work, we're working on the title work and, uh, Snap-on purpose will be done deal. We're getting ready to add thirty-six jobs in A Y McConville. And, uh, just got that, is there any questions? We're moving forward. Appreciate everybody's, everybody's help. Any things for me? Thank you very much.
We're down to the point where we're talking about the committee reports, and I want to say a word right now. I think the, uh, the committees have done an exceptional job, in my opinion, from what I've been able to watch, financial management, Budget Committee, building grounds, landfill obviously been, uh, an issue, we've been talking about, but I think anytime the committees are doing their work, by the time it gets here, it gets, you know, it's, it's very easy. Still got law enforcement, health and welfare, but the committee I want to, to really commit is from my side, is the work that Commissioner Garland and the Budget Committee has done, I watched that process, Ross, I got to watch some of that at home, but the next day, of course. And, uh, there was something that caught my eye at the very last Budget Committee meeting, which I think I need to single out, this person, he said I could do this. This shows you how county commissioners are trying to, or best to reach out and help in this county. I remember, Commissioner Garland, you may remember this or you may not, the internet connection up in the landfill committee, and you look at two or three different providers. And I know that Gary Bagley does not want any praise, I've already talked to him about this, but through the efforts of Gary Bagley with his expertise, he reached out and was able to save over a hundred thousand dollars, over a hundred thousand dollars, given that connection up to the landfill of Mr. Lance's landfill. So I think you're welcome.
You still, you still laughing? Thank you.
I'm sorry. I'm appalled, it seems like I'm appalled a lot tonight, you know? I gotta have that survey, put a Campbell on my mind. Okay, we are committee reports, so we'll go ahead and start with Budget and Chairman
Mr. Chairman, I'll start with agriculture real quick, it'll be brief. Ms. Kathleen, I think Vicki, she's been out a little bit, her on vacation, they sent me an update, just an email, covering a lot of stuff that they've been doing, I'll, I'll get that out to you guys, just their basic stuff. They're doing a lot and too much to mention right now. Uh, one thing I did want to highlight that she did send, Kathleen, her, uh, she's got a senior high force judging team and they placed first at the state contest, so I don't have many details about that, that's the first I heard of it, but, uh, certainly credit those guys for the job they did, I don't know the, the students that represent that, but I think Kathleen is, uh, she's under their guidance, so, uh, it looks to be maybe a blossoming, uh, team that they have moving on in the future, so, just wanted to mention that, but that's all I have for agriculture. So we'll move to the budget. And I'll start, I got several items I was covering, what I got on this list so far. Uh, my first item, and I'll put in form of motion, is to approve the annual inflation adjustment and contract in lieu of performance bond for the landfill, sanitary landfill, total amount of financial assurance increased, um, almost ten thousand dollars to four twenty-nine, six fifty-six, seventy-eight.
The second, second, I love your question, you guys do, any discussion?
Josh, we, we did mention this, you want to kind of look over this before, so to make sure on that?
It doesn't hurt anything to approve it, there is not gonna process anything until it exceeds ten thousand, so a cop delay today, some counties will head into it anyway, but no longer will they process the number unless the change goes to ten thousand, so we're just trying to, you know, it doesn't hurt, but...
Okay, thank you. Please reveal the vote.
Uh, the next item, and this would be come from the landfill, is a motion to approve the purchase of a new front mower, not to exceed a hundred thirty thousand, and a used road tractor not to exceed thirty-two thousand for the landfill. And this is money that will be funded with additional revenue, uh, from the acceptance of the city's trash, so none of the money on this.
Motion to check. Second. Commissioner Hill, Mike Hill, here is a discussion on the motion.
I have a guy coming from Love City, Miles White, a lot of encouragement, a lot of special equipment, he takes care of our maintenance stuff only if the older, they afford it.
Commissioner Coller?
Just want to make sure that we're clear on this, the request was for a hundred and seventy-five thousand total?
Uh, yes, it was.
Okay. And you wrote it down, the request was for a hundred and seventy-five thousand total. You know, yeah, I think that's what was approved.
Yeah, and you're right about budgets, I mean, the, the total would be up to a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars on this right here. And if this is, it's necessary, I think, was it thirty years older you got there, something like that, piece of equipment?
What we have is a hundred thousand hour run. When you start to get into that many hours, then you can start having a little more problems.
Yeah, it looked to make the one you have in operation a backup, right?
Yes, sir, it would be like, so. Commissioner Jenkins?
I'd just like to clarify, we need this equipment to proceed to operate two, three. I think it's going forward, thank you.
Any other discussion? Say no, please call the roll. Please reveal the document, motion passed, Chairman Garland.
Thank you, and the next item I'll put in form of a motion is to approve total salary benefits of up to forty-three thousand dollars for a truck driver at the landfill, and this, these funds will be reallocated within the landfill.
Second, second, Commissioner Grinsetaff, in a discussion on the motion, discussion on the motion, Commissioner Jack?
Just like to say again, this is also, we're going to have to fill the city contract,
Anything else? I don't know. Please reveal the document, motion passed, Chairman Garland.
Thank you. Now, the next item was, this is the one that featured Mr. Bailey and the work he'd done with Spectrum, and I'll put in form of a motion to approve a seven-year contract with Spectrum for internet service at the landfill, uh, the one-time fee of twelve hundred forty-nine dollars and seventy-three cents is required to pay attention to the cost with the service line, with running, uh, to getting it up to the site, a monthly charge two oh four ninety-seven, funds reallocated within the landfill.
Second, Commissioner Carter, any discussion on the motion, discussion, questions on the motion, Commissioner Bailey?
Um, which contract do you have in front of you?
I don't have one currently, I just got some notes.
Um, because actually after we went through, we went through that, I actually called back to Spectrum, I wasn't happy with the, uh, five-year with the security, I talked him down to a twelve-month security, so actually it's less, because, I mean, I'm, I'm not happy with us on these long-term contracts, so I actually topped it down to a twelve-month, so the new contract is one thousand two forty-nine for, so, yeah, I took this one in front of me, so, yeah, that one's.
So is, it's not a seven-year contract?
It'll be seven for the internet, but only one year for the security, so I wanted to let that, might be clear on that, of how that went through.
Commissioner Fraser, uh, in the Budget Committee, it shows a script with C then, because it says there were local amendment of two oh four ninety-seven, and in our contract it looks like it's two twenty-four now.
Yeah, see, that's, that's the difference from contract to the thing in the, in the budget thing right here, when we, when I dropped this and negotiated, that's what I wanted it to be here with two contracts, which is whichever one you want, it'll actually cost us a hundred and twenty dollars, so it should be this twenty-dollar difference, it two twenty-four ninety-seven instead of, uh, two oh four ninety-seven, but we're only bound to a twelve-month contract instead of five years.
At the two twenty-four.
Yes, so that's what I wanted to make sure, because, I mean, guys, I mean, things, anything can happen in five or six years here, so that's what I was trying to see here, there's actually two different contracts, it's whichever one you all want to go with.
Thank you, sir, Commissioner Carter?
Just wanted to tell you that after this was, this office was after the budget meeting.
Yes, so it's, I mean, when I live.
We're still discussing, yeah, it's a better contract.
Was not comfortable with us with the five-year contract for that, because personally, we can put internet up there or sell cheaper than what it's costing you, yes, I recommend the newest contract we've gotten.
Except the friendly. Yeah, I, I was going to say that, to the friendly member, or just make the correction that we, the two twenty-four ninety-seven, we accept that, that.
Are you making that friendly mission, uh, Commissioner Gill, first, uh, is the second, but, second, it's rigid, uh, you're with that term?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any other discussion? Please call the roll. Magic wand, you want? Please reveal the document, please, uh, motion passed.
Thank you, next item is to approve the sale of a truck and a canine, uh, by the Sheriff's Department, actual, yeah.
You have a second on that motion?
Second.
Second, High Commissioner Ruby?
This is going to Johnson County, I'm sorry, Johnson County Sheriff.
You okay with the second one I can prove?
Yes.
Any discussion on the motion? Discuss on the call. Clarify the motion, clarify the motion, is that what you need, Commissioner Jackson?
The Sheriff's Department, they're going to sell it, it just gives us, uh, the option to sell it to them and, and the dog, so.
They have some medical issues, Sheriff, they require medical issues. Everyone good with that, any other questions? No questions? Please call the roll. Please reveal the document, motion passed.
Thank you, uh, next item, I'll put in form of a motion to approve the monetary donations made in the animal shelter, uh, five hundred fifty-seven dollars and the drug control fund, four oh four fifty-three.
Second, Commissioner Carter, discussion? Discussion, same hand, call the roll, please. Please reveal the document, motion passed.
Thank you, and the next item will be a motion to approve the non-monetary donations made in the animal shelter, uh, made at five hundred twenty-one dollars and eighty-five cents.
This is the second, I'm sorry, Commissioner James, second, any discussion? Discussion, call the roll, please. Motion passed.
That's all I have, as far as that, I would like to say, thank you guys, uh, for the support of, uh, the levy, the tax rate, and the funding that we provided the county and outside agencies, uh, we, we have worked hard, the budgets, it's been tough, and of course, you know, still, you know, some things that we're talking about, but, uh, everybody's stepped up, done a great job, the financial department, they've been fantastic, uh, county offices been great, helping us out on, you know, making our budgets so realistic and making work for us, been a lot of support from, uh, fellow commissioners that have been there for these meetings, uh, public hearings, I think they started April first, I believe, uh, we met Monday nights until probably mid-June, I guess, something like that, uh, and it's, it's been a tough, grueling time, uh, there's been, been some controversy, there's been some heated debates and things like that, uh, maybe we can work through those, but, uh, but we can, what we got, the bottom line, uh, no tax increase, uh, we save, and this goes to, uh, health and welfare, we're working so hard, financial management, for, uh, getting our insurance straightened out with the new rope, we're talking quarter million dollar savings, which is amazing, which can go back to our county, our employees, uh, so many things that we've been working on, and it may be possible for our employees, three and a half percent raise, that was, that wasn't mentioned in this, that goes to our employees as well, I know several of us sitting here that are happy about that, and, and, I mean, it's not tremendous, but it's, it'll help them definitely, uh, so we're making things happen, we're working hard, and it's, it's not an easy job, but it's not just the Budget Committee, it's the whole, it's the whole commission, it's everybody working together for this, uh, so just thank, thank everyone for their hard work on that, uh, and we've talked about a, a budget workshop with the city, talking about working with them, I think would be good, you know, especially outside agency stuff, where we, uh, kind of, or, or others, where we'll, we'll fund highly, fund low, where we can maybe work those things out, no date's been set, uh, on the path, I think, you know, maybe we can, uh, work that out the next, uh, month or two, anyway, before it gets too long, but we need to let these budgets, uh, go ahead and go through, so that's something we need to consider, I think it'd be a real benefit, it's could be a morse age, and we can really work it together financially, and, uh, will be good for us. So, I mean, it's been a good year, you know, our car, and things are paying, so we want to keep moving forward with that, and, and mostly all I have there, of course, I think Mr. Bailey again for that contract, uh, and the, the elephant in the room again, and the planning, and I'm not going to read this in any kind of form of emotion, but, you know, I've been, uh, introduced with the letter again, where it was the same letter we discussed in budget, uh, want to take transferred money that they had available from surplus, uh, wage lines, two, two separate lines, I think that money was available to, uh, what the company say Chris, I know the talk was, uh, you know, we needed some hard facts and numbers, things like that, and, and Mr. Burke, he, he said that as well, that there does need to be some documentation, uh, dates, receipts, things, I was handed, you know, a pack that had some, some things like that in there, looked like it was meeting minutes and things, so there was record, but I think they're looking more for specific receipts, invoices, uh, things of that nature to, uh, to make this happen, I'd like to see it go through, but, you know, I'm not really prepared to put anything forward, I think we reached our goal of passing the tax rate, uh, this is money that's available in this, the eighteen, nineteen, eighteen, nineteen budget, would like to see it hopefully work out for, for Chris and his office, but I just wanted to mention that, at, at some point, you know, I know we've, we've fought about it many times, and, you know, it's been brought up, and it hadn't worked out, uh, I know things weren't clear early on, and I wish, you know, they would have been, maybe we went the wrong channel early, I should have took it to committee and kind of got things worked out, uh, and straightened out, just to be clear on how things went, but, uh, we know Chris has done a good job, he's worked hard for us, and I think he needs to be, uh, helped out a little bit for, for what he's done, so, uh, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
What do you question, you say that group for the winter state, are we going to fight the amendment, recognize?
Yeah, I'd certainly like to, I, I don't, that's the first I've really heard about it much, hadn't talked to Kathleen or anything, don't know those students, but we can certainly , ooh, I get those guys up here.
One other thing, great job this year, leading budget.
Yeah, thank you, hey, I mean, like I say, it's been all of us, uh, I mean, all of these, Patty, Isaiah, Kelly, uh, who else we got back there, uh, Willie, right here in front of me, Travis Hill, Eric, and, and Ray's been there, but Aaron Fraser, he really stepped up for us, and we thank you for doing that, he's a smart guy, and he asks, asks good questions, so, you know, we wanted you to be there, but you had a great replacement, uh, so, so we're real lucky, uh, got a good group, until we've got multiple committees with a whole, a bunch of good people sitting right here in front of us, so, uh, thank you.
Building the grounds committee will be next.
And I mean, this matters more than, uh, across the communities regarding lighting in the back of this parking lot, we previously approved to look into lighting for the back parking lot and paintings, at the end of the meeting in parking lot, we were looking and found some lighting out here that's been completely overgrown with ketsu and just other weeds, the sheriff has offered to have that removed, we're just required to notify this whitehead before we do any trimming of the trees, and I think right now we're just waiting on someone to make contact with our, okay, someone has to make contact.
That would be me, uh, I made contact during agreements, in fact, uh, I cut any trees, cut the bushes, make them look free, and she could put a fence up down through here, and got a pile of day, had one tree, just want to cut the one dead tree, she called me dead, said we could cut both of them, so, want to cut the two big pine trees, I've been in contact with the electric system and see if they will help us out on that, and I'm supposed to have me and them sometime this week, and we'll drop those two, and, uh, they'll be long bit, you'll match it, so, it is going to be spruced up.
That's all I have.
Education committee, I'm with the back, Mr. Johnson. No report? Okay, thank you. Financial Management Committee, Vice Chairman Johnson and Chairman of Financial Management.
No further, other than what's written.
Okay, thank you, sir. Health and Welfare, Dr. Rick Huth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, the minutes, uh, are included in your packets, are for them, the only other thing that I would mention is that if folks go back and review the documentation that was provided us by a support jury, one of those items that was mentioned in terms of looking at, uh, individuals visiting their personal physician for a, if you will, a preventive maintenance visit, that's free to them, we only have, we have less than five percent of county, of county employees who take advantage of that, obviously, if you catch a chronic disease early in its first stages, it's much more easy to treat, instead of letting it just become more chronic and chronic until, uh, it, it drives your healthcare costs up, so the Health and Welfare Committee will be looking at what has been incentivized our employees to make those visits, so we'll pull back on, look at the city, thank you.
I think it would be fair to give Dr. Rick Huth his leadership on that, on that committee, that really went after big time, this new insurance, I appreciate that, sir, committee for it. Highway Committee, Commissioner Von Camp.
Highway Committee did not meet, uh, therefore there's no report, however, there is one announcement, the brief dedication honoring Sarah and Mike Sellers will be July the twenty-seventh, two P M, that's on a Saturday, at the St. Currie Baptist Church, the ceremony will be inside because of the threat of, of rain this time of year, but then they were outside and didn't see the unveiling of the signs, uh, we expect, uh, a good crowd, because these folks were, as they say, the salt of the earth, there's no question about that. Roger?